Board of Education to order on Thursday, March 12th, 2024. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in a newspaper on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on February 28th, 2024. These include the Daily Record, The Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Parsippany Patchend, the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and on our Video On The Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Varios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldur?
Here.
Mr. Toffo?
Here. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with our student committee reports. Ms. Smith, would you mind?
Hello, everybody. Key Club had their coffee house on February 27th from 6:00 to 8:00 with all proceeds going towards Erica's Lighthouse Charity. The junior class held their school-wide dodgeball tournament on February 29th with much success. The girls' basketball team had their banquet on the 29th at the Mansion in Mountain Lakes. The Glamies were hosted on March 1st with junior presenters and senior nominees. On March 2nd, the Winter Guard had a successful competition earning fifth place amongst the 14 teams competing. On March 3rd, PHS students Emma Gonzalez, Anya Sinha, and Stephanie Guan sang with the ACDA All Eastern Honors Choir in Providence, Rhode Island. Our annual Student vs. Faculty Basketball Game was held on March 5th with the students winning by a tighter margin than expected. All proceeds went towards Project Graduation. As a part of this competition, a penny war was deciding which team was able to start with five added points. The staff was able to start with a lead, but as we saw, the lead did not give them as much help as they needed. The blood drive was also held on the 5th with the support of many student and staff donors and volunteers. The March Concert for Band and Choir was on the 6th at 7:00 PM with a canned food drive being held there as well. Tanush Panugante and Andy Shaw qualified for DECA's National Conference on the 6th after passing their objective test and financial team decision-making role-play event, placing 6th in the state. They are heading to California in a month for the national competition. On the 7th, we had our third college fair. Through donations by students and staff, the Start Program was able to make 30 birthday kits to donate to the Interfaith Food Pantry. On the 8th, the Parsippany Leadership Retreat was held at the PAL, connecting the hills and the high through games, speeches, and small discussion groups. On the same day, peer buddies had a karaoke night. We've had many more students committing to colleges like Damian Carrigan playing lacrosse at Felician College, Luca Casio playing soccer at Ramapo College, Amelia Chappell playing soccer at Stockton University, and Ava Teresi playing lacrosse at Rowan University. The Key Club is selling hot chocolate by the cafeteria during testing from Tuesday to Thursday for $1 per drink. On the 9th, the senior class had their senior fun night at Diamond City Sports. And finally, a group of students went to Atlantic City for an FBLA state competition yesterday, and they will be there for a few days, so we wish them luck.
Thank you. Ms. Petankar?
Hi, everyone. So, more Sussex Court employees visited PHHS on Wednesday, February 21st to provide an overview of various careers in courts and the role of various courts. On the 28th of February, we had our infrastructure trial for the NJGPA, which is taking place this week, and it's perfect because we get delayed openings if we're not testing.[276.02][276.02](Laughter). The PHHS and Brooklawn had their combined choir concert on the 27th in February at 7:00 PM. Students from our Chamber of Choir performed with the middle school students. Winter Guard had another amazing performance where they won 3rd place at Woodbridge with a score of 68.7. Girls wrestler Kayla Mena placed 3rd in her weight class at the regional tournament and then qualified for the state tournament, which she placed 8th in. The 200 medley relay qualified for the swim meet of champions last week at GCIT. And then last week, Par Hills DECA took 31 qualified members to the state competition at Harrah's Conference Center in Atlantic City. Trevor Snellings and Kaylee Kornreich placed as finalists in the business finance team event. And then our co-presidents, Kayshen Siti Patel placed as finalists in the business law and ethics team event. Hope Rosen and Erin Matthews will be going to the international competition in Anaheim, California next month. And Hope was a top qualifier for apparel and accessories marketing, which was her first time doing the event. And Erin qualified with high-yield portfolio in the stock market competition. On the 5th, the Varsity Club hosted a Gaga tournament, which was $1 game. We had our spring college fair on the 7th hosted by the Counseling Corner. On March 16th, we have the Project Graduation Clothing Drive fundraiser at the school from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. The more secondhand items we get, the more we raise for Project Graduation. And then this week, the FBLA members went to Atlantic City, like Emily said, and they will return on Thursday after the award ceremony on Wednesday. Last Friday, we had our first cultural assembly. Clubs like Indian Cultural Club, African American Club, GSA Anime Club, and then the Drama Club put on performances to demonstrate their club's purpose. And then last Friday was also our SEL Day and the half-day with the office hours. And then for our spring musical, Are You Looking to Have the Best Day Ever? This Thursday is the opening night for our musical SpongeBob. It's at 7:00 PM. Tickets will be sold at the door, $10 for adults, $5 for senior citizens, and free for any student with a PHHS ID. The musical is from the 14th through the 16th. And then this week, along with Tribe Music Honor Society, Student Council is holding another Pop-Up Spirit Week. Today was Dress Like Your Favorite Genre, for example, cowboy hats for country music. Wednesday is Wear Pink, which is the national color for music education. Thursdays, Wear Yellow for the opening night of SpongeBob the Musical. Friday is Wear Tied Up Because Music Ties Us All Together. On the 25th, we're hosting a blood drive. As there is currently a national blood shortage, students under 16 must get parent permission to donate, but yesterday there was registration. On the 21st, we have our annual Hill Senior Standouts, which is our senior superlative show. And then on the 28th, we have our Spring Pep Rally celebrating the spring athletes and then the beginning of spring break. Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes.[471.89][471.89](Laughter).
Do any board members have questions for Seneca, Emily, Mrs. Goldur, Mrs. Mayer, sorry?
SpongeBob is Thursday at 7:00, Friday at 7:00?
Yeah.
And Saturday in the afternoon, right?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Toffo?
When was the clothing drive?
March 16th at 9:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
The blood drive, could you just repeat the dates on that? Is off?
March 25th.
And where is it at?
It's at our school.
Oh, I thought?
It's at the school.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Thank you. Emily Seneca, thank you so much. I appreciate your very diligent, very detailed reports. Before we suspend the agenda, I'd just like to recognize two dignitaries in the audience, Mr. Matt McGrath, a town council member. Matt, thanks for coming. And Mr. Matt DeVito, former Board of Education member. Matt, thanks for coming. No other Matts in the audience. I'm going to suspend the regular agenda tonight for a budget presentation on the tentative 2024-2025 budget. With that, I will turn this meeting over to Dr. Sutter and Mrs. Tedesco.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, myself and Ms. Tedesco will be presenting the tentative budget for the 2024-2025 school year. The BOE budget timeline, the Board of Education, would be tonight is our tentative adoption, March 12th, 2024. The total budget amount cannot change. Items within the budget can be altered. We will have further discussion at our board meetings on March 28th and April 11th, and the public hearing and the public adoption of the budget will be at our April 25th, 2024 meeting. As you can see from the slide, Parsippany Troy Hills School District Mission Statement. The mission of the Parsippany Troy Hills Township School District, in partnership with families and the greater community, is to challenge and nurture all students academically and to develop confident learners who are compassionate, generous, appreciative, and invested in their diverse world. This will be accomplished through innovative opportunities that inspire lifelong learning, critical thinking, problem-solving, creative exploration, democratic collaboration among students and staff. Our next slide is our strategic goals. Our strategic goals for the district, as you can see, number one, members of our learning community will design student-centered opportunities that require active student engagement and the authentic connection to real-life experiences that strengthen creative problem-solving, critical thinking, leadership, community service, and social impact. Our next goal, members of our learning community will receive support for social and emotional awareness and mental and physical health in order to flourish, demonstrate empathy, and celebrate the diversity of all. Our 2024-2025 BOE budget directive is to adhere to the following goals in the construction of the 2024-2025 school operating budget. We want to manage and control expenses in the operating budget with the goal of achieving an end-of-the-year surplus of 2.5% of the total operating budget and optimize capital reserve. We want to provide adequate funding that does not diminish to the greatest degree possible current services to students, including facilities upgrades where feasible, security, and support of the goals of the strategic plan. Ensure our tax levy of 2% exclusive of the SGLA spending growth adjustments and bank cap. Support current expansion projects. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Tedesco.
Hi, everyone. So how do we balance the budget this year? Let's take a look. The district received $1,477,168 in additional state aid. This is, just so that you know, less than 1% of our budget. The district is using a healthcare adjustment to offset the 7.8% health benefit increase that we're facing, and an enrollment adjustment as well as bank cap to help fund the increases to program costs. The increase in state aid, along with the adjustments, help the district balance the 24-25 budget. And in case you wanted to know what bank cap is, because we've been asked that before, it's a prior-year adjustment that can be used in a subsequent budget to offset the rising costs. Our next slide is our capital projects and equipment that we will be, the capital projects that we will be doing in the next budget cycle and the equipment that we will be buying. This slide shows roof replacements, window, door, concrete, and paving replacements, classroom renovation costs, technology, infrastructure upgrades, security camera replacements, and school building painting. Our next slide is our revenue sources. This slide shows how the budget is funded. Here in Parsippany, 86% of the budget is funded by the local taxes, followed by state aid, which makes up 8% of the budget. Federal and state grants make up 2%. The rest of the budget is funded by miscellaneous revenues from facility usage, refunds, and tuition charges. Our next slide shows our budget appropriation. So 42% of the budget is for instruction, followed by 18% of the budget is employee benefits. 12% goes to support services, such as media, child study team, guidance, curriculum, and supervisors. 8% of the budget is allocated to maintain our buildings, and 6% transports our students. Another 6% is for administration, including our technology departments. The final 8% of the appropriations are allocated to capital project, health, legal, and audit services, as well as the district debt service. Our next slide shows how the taxes are calculated. Our tax levy for the 24-25 school year, inclusive of the debt service, is $158,745,968. On a home valued at $313,513, the taxes will increase $161.38. Important upcoming dates, Board of Education meetings on March 28th and April 11th, and a public hearing and budget adoption on April 25th will conclude the budget season. Does anybody have questions?
Thank you, Dr. Sutter, Mrs. Tedesco. First, thank you to yourself and the business office for putting the budget together. The Parsippany School District is a complex beast with lots of moving parts, much of them old-moving parts, unfortunately, that require a lot of care and feeding, plus the requirement to be in compliance with the myriad state and federal laws, so we really appreciate that. Any board members, do you have questions on the tentative budget? Anybody but Mr. Varios?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Tedesco, Mr. Sutter. Dr. Sutter, I apologize. I have a couple, a series of questions, so please forgive me, but I was home today. Can you, can you explain to me where you got the ratables for 2024?
I get them from the Tax Assessor's Office. I got them directly from Dan Casse's.
That's Parsippany's tax assessor, right?
Yeah.
And I believe, if I remember, that the ratables for 2024 is up from 2023?
Yes.
And the assessed values of average home, I believe is pretty much the same as it was last year?
It was up like, it was up like $2,000 maybe?
Roughly, yeah, okay.
Yes.
So, a basic question is, on our pie chart for revenue, I'm sorry, not revenue, I'll get to that next. Budget appropriations. Please remind me again, if I remember correctly, are pretty much static or fixed costs fall under the categories of A, B, and C, instructional, employee benefits, support services, correct?
Fixed meaning that you have them every year?
Happen every year?
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, so basically, for us, as a board, as a district, really where you can kind of play within the margins a little bit comes in the other small percentage of what's available, the other half of the pot, other third of the pie. So if you need to make a tweak here and there, that's what you did, but you really can't touch those static costs.
You cannot touch the static cost, no.
So, right, so they stay.
And we're talking about teacher salaries?
Correct.
All of, you know, the CBA agreements?
Right. Teacher salaries, benefits, all those.
Yes.
That is correct. So for an example, the Littleton expansion, just that we're currently going through, where in this pie chart does that fit?
So the Littleton expansion, you're talking about the construction piece of it?
Correct.
It's in the current budget, 23-24.
Right. But I'm saying, what little, what little nugget, what little slice here does it fit into?
If it was in this budget, it would be in the capital outlay?
Capital outlay.
Or it would be a...
Which is G, basically, and that's an area where if you had to, you could get the pencil, sharpen your pencil a little bit and make changes if you had to. So basically, in none of the fixed costs, are there anywhere where I could sit there and say, "We've got to expand Littleton, and we're going to adjust one of those three ABs"?
No, it would be very hard to do that.
Correct.
You'd have to save, put money away in the capital reserve.
Correct.
You'd have to see if your excess surplus funds came out for the previous year, see how much money you had left over to do capital projects for the next year.
Okay. My next question goes more into, so after the meeting on the 25th, April 25th, which will be where we'll actually vote on the budget, can you take me through the next series of steps that happens after that? So it comes to the budget, the board votes yes, and then what happens the next day?
The next day?
Just take me, take me through the transition, like, does it go to the county? Does it go to the state?
Okay. So what happens is, after you guys vote tonight on the tentative budget?
Right.
It goes to the county office.
Correct.
Then over the course of time between March 20th, the date that is statutorily due, and April 25th, the date that we have assigned to our, you know, public adoption of the budget. The county will go through the budget. If there's any changes, they'll get back to us. In that timeframe, right after we get it approved by the county, we advertise the budget, it goes out in the newspapers, then we have our budget adoption on the 20, what was the date? The 25th of April? And then after that, the budget gets posted on the website, the user-friendly budget, and then we go through all the motions of renewing everything for the new year. We go through the salaries, everybody will be approved for the next year, all of the services will be approved for the next year, and we'll start our new year on July 1st.
Got it.
In that timeframe, also, we do our tax certification.
Right.
That goes to the town. The town signs off on it, and we get it back, and we have to submit that.
Right. All right, so the next question is fairly simple, because I'm sure it's self-explanatory, is, so come September 1st, we look at our, our district size, you know, amount of enrollment, and let's just say, for argument's sake, we increased our student enrollment by 15%, right? So roughly, about what time does the state come back and adjust our budget to meet that accordingly, those 15% extra students?
It does not. The state does not come back and adjust it on September 1st. You know, you get your enrollees coming in.
Right.
You say 15%. So that's a lot of students in the district. The students go into the schools. We figure out how we're going to educate them.
Right, so the district, we just can't reopen that budget and say, "We need more money because we've got more students"?
No.
No, that doesn't happen, huh?
No, you can't open the budget. What you can do is appropriate the fund balance, but I would never, ever suggest doing that.
Well, that puts you at risk.
Yes.
So, right.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of trying to figure these things out.
No, I'm very conservative, but yes, it will put you at great risk.
So if we were stuck with that scenario, although it hasn't happened, if we were stuck with that scenario, we would have to look at the other pieces of that pie, which you can use a sharpened pencil and actually have to maybe?
Transfer money?
Transfer money from point eight, you know, from the G fund to an H fund, let's say, for argument's sake.
Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, you could do that. But basically?
Bottom line stays the same.
You're going to have to sacrifice somewhere in order to bring that to fruition, you know?
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. I wasn't sure, I was kind of curious.
Bottom line stays the same.
I guess the next question is, of all this additional funding that we received, the 1.47, what was it, 1.47 trillion dollars, right? That was it? No, I'm sorry.
Trillion, yeah.
Roughly, I mean, I know you said it's less than 1%. So ideally, what would we use that for? Just?
We used it to fund the budget.
Right.
So, our fixed costs.
Right.
We use that additional state aid and all the adjustments to fund the budget's fixed costs.
Okay.
So we didn't put anything extra in the budget.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, you cleared up a lot for me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, thanks for the great questions. Wendy, yes?
Is the increased state allowance for health, the increased percentage in health budget, does that actually cover our increased health benefit costs? Is that like, no?
No.
What's the difference, do we know?
You can have, let me see, I think it was 6.3%, but don't quote me. And 6.3%, they allow you to have a 2% increase, and then they will give you an adjustment based on how much state health benefits went up.
Yep.
And then they give you a percentage of that, so you don't even get all of it. So it's some percentage between the 2% and 6.3%, I believe.
So we kind of start out in a whole, regarding health benefits at least?
Well, anything over 2%, yes.
Anything over, and it is over 2%?
Yes.
Yeah.
7.8.
That's a notable difference, in fact. And so that enrollment adjustment, so those, that potential 15% students, like, that do, that goes in, into the computer program, the enrollment adjustment from the state the next year?
So the enrollment adjustment that we got this year is part of the taxes that we just presented.
Okay.
It's already in there.
It's in this?
In this.
And so it would be the, like, once, we basically have to float the students, any new students, for a year until we can make those adjustments?
If you get an enrollment adjustment the next year.
No, are you talking about the increase of 15% students?
No, I shouldn't.
Okay.
If, so the, if, when you say if you get the enrollment adjustment, does that mean this, like, we could have 15% more students and the state could not adjust?
Well, they have, they have a very complex formula. I went through all of the formula calculations the other day. It is very complex. It's based on six years of data. It's based on weighted calculations. So I can't answer you until I see next year's budget and how it...
And my understanding is they kind of keep that under lock and key?
It's not that they keep the budget under lock and key. How they, the way they formulate and figure out the weighted calculations, not that it changes, but the way they're interpreting us as a district, I can't tell you what that's going to be until after I see the budget.
And so there's a certain percent of, amount of that that just isn't in our control?
Right. I was surprised that we got an enrollment adjustment this year. That's why I went through all the calculations. I have to be honest with you.
Is there any additional bank cap that we're not going to retain?
No. We used all of our bank cap. It was $50,246 that we had left over from last year, that we didn't use last year, and we used every drop this year. So both adjustments and the bank cap.
And under the state and federal programs line of budget appropriation, what are the kinds of things that are paid for with that? Because, like, that's not special services because that goes under instruction, right? Like, what's?
You're talking about I on the budget?
I, yeah, what is, just an example of I?
So that's like IDA, Title I, it's the federal grants, it's any of the in-town grants that we get? So that could be a myriad of things that...
I on budget, budget appropriations, not revenue.
Budget appropriations, state and federal programs. Yeah, that's the same. It's the same on both sides, the revenue side and this side, and the appropriation side?
But like, what's an example of the thing that would get paid for? Because like, the, like, teacher salaries for special education?
There's two Title I teachers that get paid out of there.
Okay, that. And this is also an instructional cost?
Yeah.
Like, probably the bulk of that state-federal program is an instructional cost?
It's, probably, if I was going to say the bulk of it, that it's tuition.
Okay, add to the description?
Yeah, because IDA, that's the biggest chunk.
Okay, all right. I think, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you for the great questions. Any, Mrs. Cogan?
I just have a general one. I think we've alluded to it, but I just want to make sure it is said. Like, you went through and met with the principals and the supervisors and asked them what they needed, maintenance, you know, you went and got your list of what everybody was asking for, and then you tried to create this budget. You were in no way able to give everybody what they asked for, right?
No.
Like, you had to take away and tell people, "No, you cannot, we cannot put this in the budget."
I could not get everything, or Sue and I, because the two of us did it together, we could not get everything in the budget that everybody asked for. We tried to give, you know, what we could.
And they're not asking for, like, helium balloons or something? Like, they're asking for things that they really need?
They're asking for curriculum thing, things, they're asking for, you know... They're asking for curriculum things, they're asking for, you know, technology things, you know, things that we could use in the district, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Golda?
Okay. I mean, in the past, in what Dr. Wright was saying, in the past, we have, we've had a history of being underfunded. So it was, you know, it was a welcome thing to see, is that they gave us extra money, which they normally don't, and even then, we're not fully funded either. And the issue, the issue in terms of, you know, just the budget, that, you know, we have, for example, elementary schools, and I'm going to make it as simple as, you know, a box of crayons, you know, for each student, and then some parents will put online, "Well, you know, why is that teacher asking for another box of students?" Why? Because in the budget, you have one box of crayons for that student. And, you know, we can't take into account how old they are and whether they're going to break them or anything like that, because that's just impossible to do. So, you know, it's, we can only do the best in trying to, with the small percentage of the budget that we can manipulate, okay, to do those purchases. Something, you know, tissues, toilet paper, I mean, you know, cleaning supplies, it's just the type of, you know, daily expenses that we all have, and they've risen, you know, over 50% in some cases. So we're faced with the same reality, and it's, you know, and we're not talking about, you know, we're not talking about any increase yet, we're just talking about, you know, supplying things for the current students. And in facing, you know, in face, I mean, we may be, we may be pushed to ask for donations from, you know, from companies, from, you know, tax deductible donations to be able to buy, you know, exercise equipment for the high school, you know, things like that. Because, you know, as I mentioned, as I mentioned before, before my children were in high school, I had no idea that, you know, we had to provide the room for the students to exercise so that they could be better athletes, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll never forget when I said, "$6,000 for a treadmill", you know, and I'm talking 2011, you know, so it costs money. And it's, and that's just talking in very simple terms, you know, in everyday type of costs. So, Robin, my hat's off to you as always. Thank you so much for taking care of us, you know, as a district, and, you know, it's not something that, it's always a difficult task every year to put out, but it's the reality of where we stand right now. And, you know, a lot of people are saying, if you want to, you know, not a lot of people, you know, economists are saying, "If you want to live like you, you know, like you did three years ago, you need 67% raise", you know, and it's just not doable, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you. But I also, Sue did help me do the whole budget?
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks to your whole office and Sue.
Mr. Barrios?
Sorry, I have a couple of follow-up annoying questions, which is perfect for me. By the way, thank you again, you and Sue and the rest of your team. Having worked with you guys over the years, I know what you guys put into this, so God bless you.
Thank you.
So I guess the question is, you know, this seems very complex. How difficult was this, putting this budget together?
It was, it was difficult. We worked pretty much night and day for like, three weeks. Last week, it was, it was a long week.
So you didn't leave any stone unturned?
No, we went through every line.
Right.
And multiple times, exactly.
One of the things that caught my eye, and I'm just, was kind of curious, transportation. Transportation, I'm assuming, would be like the, what Parsippany owns in buses, and then what we also pay out to STA?
Yes.
Right. That number seemed kind of light to me, I don't know, am I not seeing that correctly? It was under F?
Yeah, that's right. $10,573.
Okay. So, for argument's sake, you know, we, for some reason, had to, one of our schools gets overcrowded and, you know, just can't fit another body in there, and we had to maybe make some other arrangements, and we had to get additional transportation. Is that covered in that 10-10-6? Or would that be something that would be above and beyond the current allocated budget?
So, that's a complex question. It depends on where they're going.
Okay.
Depends on if we have transportation that's going to that place.
Correct.
Is it in the budget? No, but can you fit children on, or students on buses that we currently are running? Yes. So it is a complex question. If they're going out of district, no, probably not in the budget.
Correct. Right. All right, I guess, yeah, because the number, for some reason, is true, right?
I think that number, though, is a million dollars more than it was last year, because I put a 5% increase just for STA alone on that line.
And if I remember you saying last year, and I could be wrong, but STA's number went crazy last year, correct?
I think it was two years ago.
Two years ago?
Two years ago, yep.
Yeah. And that was fuel cost and whatever else they...
It was just their costs, I guess, to maintain their drivers and keep their drivers. They pretty much raised all the route costs. We had to go out to bid, they didn't renew us, we had to go out to bid.
Right. And I believe that, if I remember correctly, it's something like that, you know, you traditionally go out for bids anyway, so you're always checking yourself to make sure that we're competitive and we're not, you know, over the top, so to speak.
With transportation, sometimes we try to renew, because you don't know what's going to happen if you go out to bid.
Correct.
And if we are able to, we will try. Like, this year, we're going to try to renew, because to go out to bid, we know we're going to pay more. Then, I think the transportation increase this year is 5.13%.
Correct.
So, I put that in the budget already.
And for a school like Parsippany, Troy Hills, you're probably looking at only a handful, if that, of bus companies that could support our size. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just one question, on the health insurance costs, so 7.8% increase, that's, Price Waterhouse Coopers does a national survey of the average annual health premium insurance cost each year, and it's about 7.5% this year, so that's pretty close to the average. A few, past few years, it's been significantly higher than that. Has the district made any structural changes to the plan, to the coverage, to enrollment eligibility that may have led to the decrease? Or is it simply that utilization was down and that the plan ran financially well?
So, two years ago, we switched from Horizon to Aetna to, you know, kind of keep costs down. I think that year, it went up like 19%, if I remember correctly. Last year, I don't remember the exact increase, something around 10 or 11% maybe, but don't quote me, because I'm just using my memory here. Yeah, so we didn't make any changes this year. All we did was ask our advisors to go out and solicit quotes for us. And that's what they're doing. And right now, these are guest estimates as to what the actual health benefit increase will be. Those actual estimates will be coming in, the bids will be coming in, soon.
Okay, thank you. And inflation, it's the third year, a little over the third year, where inflation's been running between 3% and 4%, depending on what you put into that inflation number. Today, inflation data came out, running higher than anticipated at 3.2%. And it's been between 3% and 4%, as I said, the last few years. Yet, the school district is only allowed to raise its budget by 2%, notwithstanding some smaller adjustments. How have you been able to manage the budget the last few years and keep us where we need to be?
Can I just say one thing? We're only allowed 2% of the tax, not of our budget.
Correct. Thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah, with great difficulty, exactly. I mean, we didn't leave any stone unturned this year, for sure. I mean, breakage, everything, we took.
Ms. Chell?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, I think the word you're looking for is sacrifice. We've had to give up a lot of things that we really needed.
True, very true.
But kids have crayons, they have books, there's teachers in classrooms, the heat's on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, those things are true.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you to Robin and to Sue as well, because they really did a tremendous job, and I couldn't do without them.
So at this time, if there is anyone who would like to address the board regarding the budget only, please come up, sign your name and address in the book, get the lecture, and state your name for the record, and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful, if you would like to address the board, to please do so now. Come up, sign the book after the first speaker's finished. Would anybody like to come up and address the board on the budget only? Okay, seeing none, I will close that portion of the public comment section. Correspondents, any correspondents that come before the board?
No, there's none.
Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Barrios?
I can't. No, thank you.
Anyone else unfinished business? No. Okay, we're going to go into committee reports, and as I've been doing, just want to highlight a couple of things that have transpired since the last board meeting, many of which I've talked to Dr. Sutter about. The board has decided to look at the residential developments, whether they're pilot projects or not pilot projects, and assign to various committees different duties. So the ad hoc committee will continue to be focused on tax revenue and funding. Buildings and grounds will focus on classroom space considerations. That includes within our own buildings, expanding our own buildings, and potentially going out to look for new locations, either ground-up schools or the refurbishment of vacant buildings within the township. As we know, there are a lot of commercial office space that's vacant right now. And we're going to pursue all options to have the most cost-effective and efficient plan in place for our district and for the kids in our district. We have our communications efforts. We now have an FAQs section on the district website, that's pilot and residential development-focused. Members of the public can use a link there and submit questions, and of course, board members can formulate their own questions that we'll put up there. And our policy committee is continuing to look at district policies that may be affected by additional enrollment. Dr. Sutter, you had sent out some information about the Mount Tabor Promising Practices project. It's a lot of piece. Can you just give us an update on that?
Well, I wanted to congratulate the Mount Tabor School for being selected to participate in the Promising Practices project and study, which identifies promising teaching and learning practices in New Jersey, because Mount Tabor School demonstrated a learning acceleration during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mount Tabor was selected after comparing their performance to schools with similar characteristics, considering factors such as socioeconomic status of the school, community, race, ethnicity of the students, and proportions of students with limited English proficiency or with disabilities. So they showed an increase, so we were selected.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions on that? No. Last board meeting, there were some questions regarding HVAC practices in our schools with some suggestions for potentially changing some of the ways we run our HVAC with potential cost savings. I think, Dr. Sutter, you had reached out to our HVAC consultant and posed that question to him?
Yes, I reached out to Dan McDougal, who was our maintenance director. And what he had said was that the air conditioning units were to run at their lowest settings. He says he did not say that. Mr. McDougal stated that all of our staff, including head custodians, were instructed on numerous and ongoing occasions that air conditioning units were to be set at 72 degrees during the summer months. These units have their own thermostats to control the temperature in each classroom and do not require a centralized building automation system to control them. Mr. McDougal explained that our buildings do not have the required infrastructure to support centralized cooling systems without very costly improvements to the overall system far exceeding any COVID-related funding available. Mr. McDougal explained that just one mold-related incident can easily run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars and easily exceed the million-dollar range. Mr. McDougal further explained that the cost liabilities for mold remediation is extremely high, and this is why insurance companies no longer provide unlimited coverage and limit their coverage to $1 million. Unfortunately, there just is no money in the budget for projects such as this.
All right, thank you. Any questions on HVAC? No, thank you. You know, one of the things I've always been proud of as a board member is, you know, my support of the arts. And you may have seen some articles that a number of our students were accepted into the Blackwell Street Art Show, which is being displayed at the Morris County Courthouse. And Dr. Sutter shared with me an email from Alice in Caravanau, "Our according supervisor vigil in performing arts and TV production", really just thanking the board for its support of the arts over the years, because you can really see the impact and what the students, what the students are doing. I forwarded to Dr. Sutter an email regarding Morris County School Board Association scholarship opportunities. I believe that's something that would go to the guidance counselors for implementation. Yep, oh, thank you. Yep, so that's been distributed. I think Sheetha will talk a little bit about our video-on-the-go program and some of the ideas that were discussed at our last communications meeting. Let's see, I think that's it, the things that you and I discussed, Bob. But believe it or not, it's time to start thinking about the superintendent's evaluation as well as the Board of Education's self-evaluation. Unfortunately, I am conflicted on participating in the superintendent's evaluation, so I would like to delegate that to our vice president to work on. I believe March-April is the first action item, which is actually from the superintendent to the board. So we'll put together a timeline, and I'm sure Mrs. Golda will be working on that. Just coincidentally, the NJSPA is offering tomorrow, evaluating the chief school administrator or the superintendent. So if anyone would like to attend that training, just log on to the NJSPA website, and you can register for that. The NJSPA has released their theme for the 2024 workshop, and that's Quest for Student Success. And the workshop will be in Atlantic City from October 21st to October 24th. As I've been mentioning, please review the NJSPA school board notes. Again, mentioning the inaugural Women's Leadership Conference on April 19th. There were some new SEC decisions. There are some ways to attain Board Member Academy credits if you'd like to continue your education and also work towards Board Member Certification. And as a reminder, our Unsung Heroes program will be at the County College of Morris on March 20th, beginning at 6:30. And one of our board goals was board training. We did issue a poll out to board members, and the number one winner is public and community engagement. So Joni will be working with our NJSPA rep to schedule that training for us during a board meeting. Thank you. Committee reports, let's see. Start with Mr. Ray, it being we just spent some time on the budget.
Okay. The finance committee met last night, members, myself, Mrs. Abraham, Mrs. Chappelle, Mrs. Golda, Mrs. Tatesco, and Dr. Sutter. And we discussed the, what we've been talking about most of the night, is the 2024, 2025 school operating budget. I just want to convey my thanks and my appreciation to Robin and to Sue and our team regarding preparing the budget. One of the things we talked about last night is that this is a zero-based budget, which is a much more difficult type of budget to prepare, because you're starting from the bottom up. And she did get input from the schools themselves, and this made it a much more difficult, time-consuming effort. So again, I think I speak for the entire board when I express my appreciation. One of the other things that came up last night was the structural inflation problem. We touched on it briefly here, but we have more than a 3% inflation rate. I'm just going to slightly correct you, Mr. Chaffo, but the last couple of years, our inflation has been more on the order of anywhere from 5% to 10%. And so we do have a structural problem. Our expenses are increasing, our cost of living is increasing, but yet we have a 2% cap on our tax levy. So that is something that is going to have to be dealt with, and it may be at a higher level than our school board that's going to have to be dealt with, more at a state legislature level that we'll have to deal... More at a state legislature level that we'll have to deal with this. Because this has been in place, my understanding is, for the last 16 or 17 years. And it was fine when inflation was basically flat for many years. After the financial crisis, inflation was like maybe a couple of percent, 2% a year up until 2021. So that is a challenge that we're gonna be facing, we face this year greater than in the past and will continue to face in future years. And so, but you know, with the discussion that took place, we had a chance to talk about some of the issues. I love your questions, Mr. Barrios. So anyone have any questions, any additional questions regarding the meeting?
No. Jack, do you have a liaison report at all or just finance?
Just the finance. I didn't go to the PAL meeting, but...
No problem. Wasn't putting you on the spot. I just didn't know if you had a...
Yeah, no, no, I don't.
Mrs. Mayor?
Hello. The sports committee met with the boosters on March 7th. Present were myself, Mrs. Hogan, Dr. Wright, Mr. Ricker, Claire Herman, and Mike DeBernard. You know, we thanked the boosters for coming. It was my first meeting because this is my first time on this committee. Thank you. I'm not gonna read everything that was said. It's just ridiculous for me to read everything. But Mike gave us an update and, you know, about the emergency response team and all. And I asked about if everybody is trained for first, you know, to give CPR because he talked about having the defibrillator there. And they have classes how to use it. And they also have classes how to administer CPR if it's needed, even for the students, which I thought was really important. Let's see. Okay. They don't current, all right, the rest is pretty much... They were trying, the boosters were saying that they're really worried about they're not getting enough parent interest in the kids coming up. So they were trying to decide how they could kind of stimulate more interest in the program to become a booster. And it's funny because I said that my boys were very into sports at the hills, and I even didn't even know about the booster program. So I think, you know, there has to be an awareness. So both of those people from, Mike did the PHS update, Claire did the PHHS update. That's basically it. They were talking about to change the records, you know. Especially if you read the sports part, a lot of students broke records in different things. And it came up at the hills, they were asking, I guess there's a board that has all that information, and they were asking when that will be updated. And they said they're gonna do that over the summer because some sports are still going on, so they don't want to start messing with it yet. And that's basically it. The rest is really stuff that you can look at, you know, on your own. And our next, oh, that was it. We don't have a next meeting scheduled.
Any questions for Judy on sports next week? So thank you for the reminder. So we all have our committee minutes in front of us. Some of them are longer than others, and it might be a good best practice to try and summarize them versus reading the committee report verbatim. It does sometimes just take a lot of time. Judy, I think I saw on your report that they were looking to perhaps add some additional teams, I think girls golf?
Yeah, they were talking about, I'm trying to remember which teams they were talking about.
Who was golf and basketball?
Well, they have girls wrestling.
Yeah.
I don't remember what else. I'd have to go back and read this whole thing again.
My question, was there a mechanism they're using to evaluate whether or not that they may add those things or not? Are they soliciting opinions or...
Then they were talking about that there really isn't a whole lot of room for these new sports to practice. You know, the gym can only hold so much. That was a big thing that they were talking about. And if they need practice time and the gym is taken and you can't go outside, that's a problem. So they were talking about that. They were talking about, my favorite, pickleball. So, you know, those are things that they'd like to do if there's an interest. But again, it's space and teacher to be in charge of it, so.
Thank you. And you mentioned that they're having trouble or difficulty getting people to sign up, parents to sign up for boosters?
Yeah, they were saying that they don't get that enthusiasm from parents coming up, you know. I don't know, they don't know if their kid's gonna be in sports, so they don't want to commit yet. They were talking about ways to, you know, generate that interest. You know, I thought maybe they could have a coffee thing where they invite prospective parents in and show them what boosters do and kind of talk it up. The coaches do go down to the lower grades and discuss the sports and all. But I think they really need to hit the parents and let them know because they're the people that need to buy into that. Like I said, I didn't even know about boosters. So I think that has to be an awareness that has to be brought out.
Okay, thank you. Who's our PTA council liaison? Is it Tim? Is that you?
PTA, yes.
PTA council, yeah. And just seeing a current PTA president attend the meeting, just came in a few minutes ago. I would really love to see a schedule, a PTA council meeting with the local PTA presidents as well as yourself.
There is one.
There is one. When's the date?
They're having it tomorrow, no? It's next Wednesday.
Oh.
Is it next Wednesday?
So you didn't know about it?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so let's, maybe, Dr. Sutter, you can get that out to the board. I think we're missing a crucial ally in how we reach out to the school community by not working more closely with the PTAs. And if my schedule permits, on the date, I'd also like to attend.
I'll do the break.
Thanks. Mrs. Hogan?
Do we want to do liaison?
Oh, yeah. Why don't we do liaison reports as well as committee? So Mrs. Mayor, do you have a liaison report?
Oh. Oh, about my, what I did over the weekend? Is that, I'm sorry, I missed what you were saying.
Do you have a liaison?
A liaison?
To import anything else?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I could talk about the programs I went to over the weekend. Is that what you're asking me?
No. Were you assigned to the PAL or to the town council? No, you don't. Okay, good. Allison, I think, thinks differently. Do you think?
She has something to report out, but she will have to do it on her own time at this point.
Okay. I'm confused, but thank you. Mrs. Hogan?
All right. Buildings and grounds met on February 22nd with myself, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Mayor, Mr. Chaffo, Ms. Tedesco, Dr. Sutter. We talked about the 2024 budget and the capital projects that would be in there, and they were listed on the budget report tonight. We talked about the project updates, the grounds project updates. The PHS auditorium lighting upgrade has been completed, which is very exciting, especially right before the musical is about to happen. Everything else, you know, is listed in here is, you know, going as it's supposed to be going. We talked about St. Christopher's and, you know, the cost effectiveness or the lack of cost effectiveness of, you know, renovating a project property that, you know, would be leased. We talked about other, you know, building opportunities for potential school locations. We talked about the Littleton construction update. We do now have the building permit. So that's obviously progressing. The project is currently at, still at 102-day delay, which, we haven't gone backwards, but we're still at 102 days. The committee asked Mrs. Tedesco to reach out to the architects to give the district a listing of each school and its maximum capacity of students. And then we talked about the overall township residential development, and that was Buildings and Grounds.
Any questions for Allison on Buildings and Grounds? No. I know you attended a session over the weekend, a legislative session?
I did legislative.
You want to do your liaison first or you do whatever you want first?
There you go. But I went to the school board's legislative committee meeting on Saturday. The guest speakers were, now I lost it, Senator Angela McKnight from District 31 and Assemblywoman Dr. Rosario Bagali from District 27. Dr. Bagali is actually an administrator in a local district. So she, being part of the Assembly's Education Committee, is, I think, going to be a huge help to them because she can actually explain what's happening in schools. One of her regulations that she would like to pass is having the government actually ask school officials and relevant parties in the school funding formula. Right now, there's no requirement that they contact any outside parties to do the school funding formula. So she's asking that they actually are required to, you know, ask the relevant parties before they do the school funding formula. So the committee gets a chance to ask them questions. Most of it was on the current budget. And, you know, the districts that lost money are not happy. The districts, like Mrs. Goldner said, who have been chronically underfunded are not happy. So that was the main point of the whole committee meeting. There was also a discussion that the budget, the state budget has meetings that are open to the public for anybody to comment on them. And one was, I think, yesterday and another one's next week. There's also a Senate committee meeting on the new school funding formula, and they requested testimony from anybody interested, particularly school boards, on the upcoming school funding formula because the funding formula that is in effect theoretically expires at the end of next year. So they either continue it on or come up with something new. So my suggestion is, as many people as can say something about that, do so because the, what was said at the meeting from mainly the senator, who isn't a school employee, just made me realize they have a lot going on. They have a lot on their plate. They have to discuss a lot of things. They are not necessarily tuned in to exactly what is going on with schools and the funding. So it would probably be a good idea to make sure that we can do whatever we can do to make sure that they do know what's going on and how hard it is to do a budget with a 2% property cap. So that was basically the legislative committee meeting. I also went to the CPAC meeting last week, which is on transition out of school, given by the ARC. And it was very good. I think there was at least 17 or 18 people there. So it was very well attended and it was very good information.
Thank you. Any questions for Allison? We're gonna jump over Vice President Goldner and go to Dr. Wright.
The transcourt committee did not meet. Both, there was no agenda item presented, and it created additional time for the finance committee to meet.
Thank you. Shappell?
Do you want me to move now or?
Mayor, summary, summary report, not verbatim. Summary reports.
All right. I'm gonna start with Teaching and Learning, if you don't mind. Sorry. Teaching and Learning met on February 26th. Present were Dr. Mulrooney, myself, Ms. Goldner, and Dr. Wright. Can you speak loud? Oh, okay. Can you hear me now? There were three courses that had books added, including Mythology for 12th Grade Semester English, Fantasy and Fairy Tales for 12th Grade Semester English, and Revised English III and English III Enriched. And only the top three titles out of the seven or eight were included in today's meeting agenda. The books were The Following, The Lion and the Witch and the Wardrobe by C.S. Lewis, Becoming Brianna by Terry Libenson, The Ghosts of Rose Hill by R.M. Romero. And then the additional four books will be on the next meeting agenda. We also discussed deeper thinking focus groups. It met four times throughout this school year. And they continue to focus on teaching strategies, perspectives, questioning, specific activities, asking more open-ended questions, and the different aspects of teaching that impact deeper thinking, including expectations, language, time, modeling routines, interactions, and environment. In addition to that, they did an activity called I Used to Think and Now I Know. In addition to that, we spoke about the June 14 PD Day with food trucks to allow teachers to become, to be more aware of these focus groups and share their feedback with their peers. The middle school committee is adding sixth grade 21st century skills quarter course for the upcoming school year, not making any adjustments to the bell schedule at this time. In addition to that, we had the Parent Night, A Parent Caregiver Guide to Vaping Prevention, which was held on February 20th at 6:30 PM at PHHS. And free childcare was also provided, but it unfortunately didn't draw as many people as they would have liked. For the next event, there is discussion of combining it with another event and communicating and advertising it more for better turnout. Multiple academic pathways were also discussed, and currently STEM Pathways has had lots of success, and they are adding two other pathways called Visual and Performing Arts and Humanities. And Dr. Mulrooney provided a preliminary overview of all of them. And last but not least was the esports pilot is just for juniors in high school. And these programs are thriving and are inclusive for all students, and they're offered one day a week for one and a half hours as an after-school program. And the students show their commitment and expectations to it, just as they would for a sport. And I'm sorry that the minutes are not included in your packets printed out, but I will get it to you.
Any questions for Sheetho on TLC? I'm sorry, what are esports? Oh, gaming. Okay, thank you. Not for money, right? Just for fun?
Underground esports. That's not school, I mean.
Yes, Mrs. Chaffo?
Just in addition to that, there are many schools, many universities and colleges, which have introduced it as a Division One sport to say, too. So it's actually taken up quite a following.
And should you have a communications report?
Yes, I do, and I apologize I have time. Because it was a lengthy meeting, and it does have lengthy notes, but they are very important feedback that we did receive. Communications did meet on February 26th, and present were Dr. Sutter, myself, Mr. Ray, Dr. Wright. We were able to have Brian Satch join us as well as Mr. Chaffo. We discussed the feedback and goals from the district to the public in regards to a communications plan and video on the go enhancements. And like I said, Brian Satch of Video on the Go was able to join us to help us with this. He provided a tremendous amount of feedback and ideas on how to enhance and engage more viewers. We discussed the YouTube channel, which has 2,700 subscribers and 1,300 videos thus far, including the BOE meetings and different school activities that are uploaded. The last view count for our last BOE meeting was 70. Also discussed using, also discussed, we also discussed using Twitter more for more engagement. Additional suggestions included using the Facebook pages like Parsippany Support Page for more behind-the-scenes showings of district events, including recognition of staff and students, since that brings in more engagement. Highlighting internship students and the STAR Program was another idea. Brian also stated that highlighting students, including students in arts, music, et cetera, would bring in more engagement. Other suggestions included recording and live streaming any requested concerts. And the theme of enhanced engagement would go a lot further, the more we share on social media, Instagram, as well as Facebook, spotlighting teachers all year long. School board news can also be shared as board highlights via the superintendent. We discuss having transparency and podcasting on Spotify or Apple, where we have BOE members talk to students, let them discuss hot topics of the time, and/or discussions with community residents and parents to engage them even further. Topical discussions about budgets, facilities, funding, et cetera, might be helpful for our district families to know. And it might help bring parents into the fold a little bit more, especially with the current climate of issues facing our students both in and out of the classroom. Engaging parents and families may bring more accountability, learning an interest about items such as AP classes, sports, extracurriculars, and difficult subjects like vaping. Another idea was a PSA on YouTube about vaping or vaping projects by students and a link that can be provided for everyone to watch. Other insights included showing more positive sides of Parsippany, announcements about fundraisers and PTA events, enhancements to the school mobile app, et cetera. Professional development and training for staff can be either online or in person as needed, and we can discuss pilot facts, figures, impact, poll the community, run focus groups, et cetera, for further feedback. And speaking of pilots, we did have some questions about, from the public that a board member did receive and shared. And to answer some of them in regards to open space at Lake Hiawat, the elementary, central, and Brookline Middle Schools, the blueprints of the schools are available to identify classrooms, and each principal will be able to get a blueprint, which helps determine how many students are allowed in each class. Unfortunately, combining both high schools into a regional school is not likely and would probably be a rather pricey endeavor of over $100 million. Assuming that pilots were not a factor, and this was a question that was brought up, assuming that pilots were not a factor and that developers were just going to build the new residential units, what would change? And please be specific. Some questions and discussions ensued on pilots, including Parsippany Park, which will be completed by the end of the year, logistics, townhomes, and the number of units and how many students that may come out of it. If, for example, there are 100 units, could there be 40 students or even 240 students from Parsippany Park alone? And we also discussed some facilities around Eastlake. We also discussed adding a communication slide provided by Dr. Wright to the website for a quick glance of facts and figures, and the slide includes... for a quick glance of facts and figures, and the slide includes information such as the amount of money the school district spends on average to educate each student in the district. As a governor is providing state aid figures, including certified tuition rates for 2002 to 2003, we would like to have these figures before we can update the slide accordingly. And last but not least, we're looking to add the frequently asked questions link to the website. That would include this slide along with questions that come in from the community and our answers. This information will be reviewed thoroughly before uploading to our district website, and as Ms. Tedesco communicated to the committee, the business, the business office is working on the budget, and once it's completed, she can provide the most accurate information for the seven key numbers in funding. So thank you to Dr. Sutter and Ms. Tedesco for taking the time to ensure that our information is correct, and thank you, Mr. Satch, for joining us and providing important feedback to us.
Thank you for that. Any questions for Sheetho on communications? I'd wanna thank Brian for attending the communications meeting. I think it was very fruitful. There's a lot of food for thought, a lot of opportunities for us to enhance how we communicate with the public, and we just need to seize those and begin. So thank you for that. Diva? Yeah, Mr. Berrios.
Quick question. Doesn't sound like you've probably covered it, but on your radar, have you yet, or do you plan on discussing the request by Mr. Cahill for his request he made earlier in the year for video on the go? I'll be going to a chamber meeting, and I'm sure he's gonna ask me.
I don't think we addressed that specifically in communications, but we can take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be part of it.
And that was to highlight local businesses?
Correct. I guess they were using.
Local merchants, right?
Yeah, local merchants and whatever else they do for Cahill.
I'd be happy to add that to the next agenda.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yes. Well, not a question as much as, not even an opinion, but maybe this question. So why would communications be the ones that would make any decisions or do anything with respect to any requests that Mr. Cahill has for video on the go when that should, that should be something that has to come to the district first and then assigned to, you know, to the committee, not where Mr. Cahill sends the information to the committee and then it comes to the board? It should be the other way around, first of all. But before we could respond to Mr. Cahill, we have to find out what the costs involved would be, and I, I don't believe that as a district we have any of, of that information. So it's not like we are, we can respond to anyone with respect to, we, we don't know how much we would charge per hour or for event. We don't know what the actual cost for a video on the go would technically be, you know, per hour or per ever, because, for an event or for, or for a, you know, any project because, you know, there's, you know, there's a salary involved and, as an employee of the district. So it's a little more complicated, I believe, than.
Just real quick, I believe, and I could be wrong, Mr. President, please correct me, as I brought this up in new business a couple of meetings ago, and I believe that you had assigned it initially to communications. If that's wrong, I apologize. As relates to all those points you made, that's a very good, good analysis, but I guess bottom line is someone should get a hold of Mr. Cahill, and whether it's gonna take a month, a year, two years, whatever, let him know where it is because he's going to ask me again, and I don't think anybody's gotten back to him.
Right, but, but like you said, you're going to see him, and it's not an easy question to respond.
It's not.
And it has to be administration.
Yeah, but it's not in my, it's not in my, it's not in my area to talk to him about, so.
No, yes.
Yeah, so if I can, and Susie, I agree with everything you said. I think at last communications meeting, it was a very robust agenda. It was a very long meeting. I think we went over our allotted time. The idea of having video on the go work with entities that aren't part of the school district, I think, is very much in its infancy. There was a time when video on the go was working with the township to, to do various things, but that, that has stopped. So I think under the broader umbrella of how can we expand video on the go above and beyond what it's currently doing, both with our own internal communications as well as what, what can we do for the community, either at no charge or for a fee, we haven't really begun to explore those. Time just didn't permit at our last communications meeting. And let's say, Tim, for Mr. Cahill, he should direct a question to the superintendent about what he's looking for. So what I would tell him at the next chamber meeting is, you did bring it to the board. It's being presented or being discussed in communications. However, we would need some more details from him about what he's looking for from a service like that, and he should direct those to the superintendent to then, then work with the board on that. And I think, I think that should satisfy his, his request. I'd like to say, well, he'll be there next meeting, you know, but we can't, we can't do that. We need to evaluate this further. Michelle?
I, I think that all the points raised are very valid. I just have a question, and this may be naive, so bear with me. Above and beyond video on the go, and in light of all of the extra attention we're giving to the curriculum in our schools and focused on developing opportunities for our students, is there an opportunity where we can enlist our students to get involved with the community and record things? And, you know, I guess it does take, we need to take into account what he's asking for, but maybe there's an opportunity that we can involve our students in that effort.
And Dr. Sutter, I mean, I put you on the spot, but we do have an apprenticeship program in place where we do work with the two high schools, and I'll, you know, please expand on that.
That's correct. We have television, and Brian can speak to that as well. So, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
So thank you for that, yeah. Sheetho, any liaison reports?
Last night, I was able to attend the Parsippany Education Foundation Liaison Meeting, and they met. I can't hear you.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Andrew Latus opened the meeting, and once the adoption of the agenda was completed, we discussed the minutes of the February 13 meeting, followed by the treasurer's report and any correspondence. The meeting attendees also discussed the Tom Latus Golf outing that is coming up, and along with fundraising, donations, dinner, planning, prizes, sponsorships, the number of golfers, et cetera. They also discussed the Spring Jeans Day, which was gonna be on March 27th, along with a food truck fundraiser for June 4th. And other topics of interest were senior scholarships and a pickleball fundraising idea. And the next meeting will be at the BOE building on April 9th. And just a reminder, the Tom Latus Memorial Golf Classic is on Tuesday, May 14th at Noel West Golf Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That typically had been one of the big fundraisers for the PEF. I have to check with my social director, but I'd, most likely will be there for dinner. I don't play golf. It's very bad watching me play golf. But, you know, to contribute to the PEF, you know, share dinner with some like-minded individuals would be fun. So please, if you're, if you're available, 10, on May 14th, please do. Good, thank you. Mr. Berrios?
Thank you, Mr. President. Policy met, met on February 29th, 2024, in attendance for myself, Mr. Rea, Ms. Chappell, and President Chaffo, and we had input from Madam Attorney, Kate Gilflin. And so we met and discussed the suggestion on Bylaw 0152 and Bylaw 0157.
0171.
I'm sorry. Jeez, 0171. I looked right at it, too. So they are in your attachment, and I put it there in the bulletin for first read.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And to my fellow committee members, I have the first two policies that I was able to draw out relating to the pilot slash redevelopment subcommittee, so I'm gonna be sending that out. If not tomorrow, definitely by Friday, you'll get them, and then we'll schedule a meeting accordingly.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Berrios? Mrs. Golda?
The only thing, okay, sorry. The only thing I, is that for the unsung heroes, I, everyone had received an email from Joni, as you remember, unsung heroes are students from the high schools or middle schools if the, if the district doesn't have a high school. They, the committee, on the county committee, the committee that handles raising money and doing that have done an incredible job in trying to get more money, and the money is donated to the students in a, basically in a scholarship type of way. It goes directly to the student. It doesn't pass by, you know, there's, there's no fees involved. It goes directly to the student. So if anybody, what, on, on the March date, what they do is they, they get a gift bag, each one of them, you know, for just being named the unsung hero for their district, and in the bag where they try and put some goodies. One of the things that they were trying to do was get a $50 Amazon gift card. So if anyone, you know, I know Mr. Chaffo has offered to donate some. I know Mr. Rea. I don't know, you know, so if any, that day, what is going to happen is give me just the Amazon gift card. They, I do tell them who has donated them, and I will give it to them that same day because we have to be there early for, you know, setting everything up before everyone gets there. So that's how it'll happen. So either myself or even to Judy, who is actually on the committee and will probably have more information.
If I can just add to that, I spoke to Bernadette, and she said that there were so many that we needed to fulfill for all the bags. So we had five that were already committed, and we needed one more. You know, I already purchased or committed to two, and I told her if we didn't get that last one, that I would fill in for that. So we have two, four, five already spoken for. We just need one more.
Oh, okay. When did you last speak to her? Because she texted me. She texted me and said that they needed, on top of the five that I said I was bringing, she said we needed six more.
No, we just need one more.
Just one more? Oh, great. Okay. So maybe.
The denomination is $50? The denomination of the gift card is $50?
Yes, it's $50 gift card. Yes, Amazon gift card. So they could put in the, in the gift bag.
Mr. Berrios?
Sorry, I, I didn't finish my liaison report.
Oh, I, I do, it seemed like there was a part stop there.
Oh, no, just for policy. I love my myself talk. Town Council Liaison Report from the meeting of March 5th, 2024. I'm just gonna key in on some of the more important things that I felt were for the, for the board. There were two ordinances passed. One was ordinance R. 2024-143, Resolution of Town Council of the Parsippany Troy Hills Authorizing the Appointment of a New Special Law Enforcement Officer, a Class III Officer. Didn't say whether that was to replenish our Class III, but I just wanted, thought that, bring that up. There was also ordinance R. 2024-044. This was a resolution of the Town, Town of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, opposing Assembly Bill Number Four, Senate Bill Number 50, which proposes overhaul of the Fair Share Housing Act, FHA, in a way that imposes unrealistic obligations and unrealistic time based on the onerous standard. I have the actual wording and the resolution with me. If you'd like to take a look at it, please be, take, give my guess. I wasn't gonna read the whole thing here tonight. I wanted to, let's see, there was a council report by Councilman McGrath discussing the impact of the tax appeal losses. Mr. McGrath echoed Mayor Barbario's concerns regarding the town, the township's tax appeal losses, and emphasized their significant impact on the township's finances. He highlighted the need to address the issue to maintain fiscal stability. There was a meeting yesterday of the Transparency Committee. That was an initial meeting that happened yesterday, and I'll just, I'll wait till the next one to give you more details on that. However, on this, on these meetings, there is a call for the public to, to attend and participate, so. And then there was Mayor Barbario's report. He again stressed the budget concerns. He expressed concerns about the budget. He has not met formally with Council President Karifi. He's concerned about the carryover of over 463 affordable housing units from the last round, which will pose challenges for the township financially, and I also will say to the school board, financial stability. The mayor emphasized the importance of financial stability, highlighting potential challenges due to tax appeals and companies moving out of Parsipony. He stressed the need to retain companies to avoid a shift in the tax burden onto residents. Mayor Barbario discussed effort to retain businesses, including pilot programs, despite challenges where commercial developers leave in properties to banks. He noted the importance of balance and revenue generated with residents' interest. Discussed public safety with the police department regarding praising the police department's performance despite some of the social media criticisms, and that he was also, because of the fiscal challenges, the workforce is not up to where he would like to see it just yet. And Mr. Mayor also talked about the state funding for the Board of Ed, 1.47 billion in funding, suggested it should help the Board of Ed with our budget. He expressed disappointment with the lack of increase in township funding compared to its significant increase received by the schools. He highlighted the unfair distribution of the municipal purpose tax assistance fund by the state. I guess currently today, Parsippany Troy Hills does not, cannot receive that, that assistance, so. And that is my report.
Thanks. Any questions on the Town Council Liaison Report? Dr. Wright?
This might not actually, this might be beyond the purview of the, the meeting itself. But my understanding of the revision of the Affordable Housing Bill is that one of, you know, it's, one of the benefits is that it removes the, what's the phrase? The builder's.
Remedy.
Builder's remedy?
Builder's remedy. And it actually gives municipalities, while it increases the obligations and it's a little more structured, there is more municipal control and less developer autonomy under this division. And it seems to me that one of the common themes we've been hearing from the town about pilots is, well, we have to have them because otherwise the builders will come in and stick us with affordable housing, which is problematic in a number of other ways. But do, is there any sense like of acknowledging the complexity or that this, this might not actually be bad for Parsipony?
In any event that I have been in, no. However, I did print out the documents. They're fairly lengthy, and I have not read them, read through them. I was planning on doing it this weekend, so as soon as I'm done with it, I'd be more than happy to share.
Great. Thank you so much.
I have a question.
Yes, Susie.
With respect to the tax appeal portion of it, did they, did they provide any dollar amount as to what losses they're talking about? Are we talking $1 million, $5 million, where hundreds of thousands?
Well, I have seen, unfortunately, my little fingers were not typing fast enough to catch the actual number. I believe it was in excess of 5 million, but I do not want to quote that number. I wanted to say is that I will confirm that.
Okay.
I will ask.
All right, thank you.
And Mrs., Mrs. Mayor?
Now? Now, can I?
Yes.
I wanted to report out on the events that I went to Friday, and it was supposed to be Saturday for Diwali. It was Sunday. Friday, it was the NOR, Nowras, I don't really remember how they pronounced it, celebration. And it was really very nice because the parent who I spoke to said it was more like, it wasn't a religious thing. It was more like Thanksgiving is for us, you know, anybody could come. They had, you know, stuff for the kids to do. It was really lovely. It was really lovely. Um, it's spiritual renewal, reflection and connection with family and community. It was interesting because they had a plate set up and they had seven, um, components on the plate that each stood for something. And then they had this guy dressed up, this poor little old man. He was dressed up to look like this. Um, and he handed out treats to the kids and all kinds of toys. It was almost like Christmas, you know.
It was about Persian New Year.
What?
The Persian New Year celebration.
And it's a celebration of the first day of spring. So they were all, you know, okay, that was Friday. Um, the Saturday, um, the volley celebration.
Ramadan.
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 Ramadan celebration was switched to Sunday because Saturday's weather was so bad. And we came and it was so cold that they brought it all inside, which was really nice. They had tons of food. I mean, it was a really nice celebration. The room was packed. I mean, if the fire marshal had been there, we would have been shut down. It was just packed. People were in the hallway.
It's an unofficial assessment.
It was nice to see all these people come together for that celebration. So the mayor spoke, um, you know, it was just fun to be there. And then I thanked the Board of Ed, you know, as usual, for all the considerations that we give to their celebrations. So I was really proud to be there to represent the board at both celebrations.
Thank you. Thank you for attending, uh, those two events. Appreciate it. Are we done with committees and liaisons? I think so, right? Okay, good. Um, so can we move on, please, to approval of the minutes? We have executive sessions, uh, one and two, uh, in regular minutes, uh, February 22nd, 2024. May I have a motion, please? Sheethol? Allison? Roll call?
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Abstained from both executive sessions and yes to regular.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldr?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Okay, we are up to Superintendent's Bulletin Number 15, Dr. Sutter.
Thank you, President Chaffo.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. In an effort to assist parents during non-school hours with their child's school-issued electronic device, the district will utilize the Qodesto software program. Qodesto is a parent software control which provides peace of mind by allowing parents to easily monitor and manage their child's web activity. Qodesto will also allow parents to pause access to the internet in their child's device. Additionally, parents will be able to add up to two personal devices for free with discount upgrade options for those who are interested. Our goal is to ensure parents will have more control over their children's digital lives on the devices the district sends home. The district will be rolling out our Qodesto software initiative sometime in April and run it through the end of the school year. If all goes well, the district will keep Qodesto in place for the summer and will use adjusted hours. I want to thank Dr. Maruni and Mr. Ricker and all the students at PHS and PHHS who participated in our peer leadership retreat on Thursday, March 7th, at the Parsippany PAL. As I visited, I watched students listen to guest speakers and engage in small group activities. Students looked like they were having such fun as did Dr. Maruni and Mr. Ricker. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bulletin Items 1 through 31 with addendum and reading items 32 through 49.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. Um, the two policies that Mr. Barrios brought up were included in the bulletin. Obviously, uh, you can ask questions about anything you'd like, but, um, I'll open up questions to, uh, Dr. Sutter on the Superintendent's Bulletin. Yep.
Um, I have a question, but it wasn't covered in the bulletin. I, I was, but it's for you because I know that some districts, no, are concerned about the eclipse and they're just, they're letting their kids go home early that day so that they're not outside during the eclipse and they're not looking up and damaging their eyes. I didn't know what this district's thoughts were on with that or thought about it at all.
We have been giving it some thought, um, but we haven't, we're not ready to make a decision at this point.
Okay. I was just curious.
There are districts, there are districts that are calling a half-day that day.
Right.
But, you know, we have to take into consideration, you know, parent accessibility and things of that nature, so we'll make a decision.
Wanted to know if it was on your radar.
Don't look up.
Thank you. I don't plan on it.
What? Okay, this is probably going to be a dumb question, but what has been done in the past? Nobody?
To my, to my knowledge.
No, okay.
Mr. Rea?
From what I read about it, the amount of the eclipse in this part of the country is going to be like 1/50th of the surface of the sun that you see. It's like, there isn't even any reason to, there's really not going to be any change. It's not going to get any darker, really. It's, it's going to be the biggest non-event in, in history since Haley's Tom.
Mr. Rea, we have openings, science classrooms, if you're ready. I appreciate your help.
Just curious if other districts were concerned.
It's good to see we're focused on our pupils' pupils. Any other questions for, uh, Dr. Sutter? No questions. Uh, we are up to the secretary's report. Mrs. Desko, please.
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval hopefully of the 2425 tentative budget. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, hearing done. We are up to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It will be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up now and sign, uh, sign in the books that you're ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, uh, these meetings are, meetings are video recorded. Um, if you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask that you not provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in the comments and are referred to by law 160 or further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Mr. Livio.
Hello?
Now it's on. You got it.
Hello?
It's on. It's on, it's on.
This is fancy cakes too.
Thank you. Matthew DeVito, Parsippany. I've brought a handout tonight that's being passed around. Um, this is information that you would have probably seen before, or maybe you haven't. Um, this is two tables from our 2023, uh, 2023 district audit. Um, this is regarding enrollment. And it, I want to highlight a few things about this information. It shows the enrollment of all of our individual schools and what the capacity of each of those schools are. And what that, what this shows here, if you look across for several of the elementary schools, East Lake, Knollwood, Lake Hiawatha, Littleton, Tabor and Northale, they all have significant enrollments above their listed capacity for students. And they have been for the past 10 years. So some of them are well above 100 students over the capacity listed. I don't recall any major improvements like for adding space to our elementary schools since this, doing the Littleton addition now. So that's where I see where I know the state always asks you, oh, you know, you need to be over, over capacity to make additions. Well, here's an example of six of our schools, not just Littleton, that have significant capacity issues. So this is something I'll bring into the board's attention for you so that maybe in the future you can look at this and do some wherewithal, find a, whether or not we need to do expansions and start that planning. So that's basically I had to do. Uh, I also wanted to make a quick note. Uh, I had noticed the new committee ports, reports for this, for this term. I like to see that, it's very interesting to see that certain members that have never, certain, you know, certain committees before had an opportunity to do on committees they'd never seen before. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. Um, I'm Cassandra Grasso from Parsippany. Um, I'm a lifelong Parsippany resident and, uh, my husband, who is actually sitting back there, is Dr. Shada Storga. Uh, I've lived here my whole life. He's lived here for over 25 years and we're both proud graduates of the Parsippany school system. Go Vikings. We're here tonight because we'd like to collaborate with the Board of Ed on creating a youth cannabis use prevention program. Full disclosure, our company Happy Days Boutique hopes, hopes to open the first state-licensed and certified minority woman-led adult-use cannabis dispensary right here in town. One of our company's main initiatives is to provide educational opportunities to the community with an emphasis on youth education and mentoring programs, as well as to help those experiencing substance abuse get their lives back. There are many misconceptions and misinformation regarding cannabis and I feel it's our social responsibility to fill the knowledge gap. We had our first open public information session, uh, last May at the Parsippany Public Library and we plan to have another seminar in the next few months. We understand that cannabis is a very sensitive topic, especially with regards to youth safety. And therefore, we'd like to ask Dr. Sutter and the Board of Ed to have the opportunity to privately meet and hopefully discuss, um, something with a collaboration in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the, the public portion. Dr. Sutter, would you like to address either of the two speakers?
Well, thank Mr. DeVito for the information. Ms. Grasso, uh, we can talk after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I believe we are now up to the roll call vote of Superintendent's Bulletin Number 15, Items 1 through 31 with addendum items 33 to 49. May I have a motion? Michelle? Mrs. Goldr? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
No one, number four, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldr?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Signal the business motion to adjourn. Dr. Wright? Mrs. Mayor? All in favor? Okay, meeting's adjourned.